Okay, it's 6:30. We're gonna go ahead and call the work session meeting to order. First off, Municipal Service Committee Chairman Ed Long.
Thank you, Mayor. And the first thing that we've got is your presentation. It's one of our city employees, the ordinance to allow one of our city employees to do business.
Thank you, sir. We've had this for several years. Gabe has done engraving and other related services for the city in the past. This is just kind of what you call general housekeeping, but of course, we'll answer any questions you have. And we have the legislation here. It's time for renewal. Is that pretty much it, Ben? Go ahead.
Yes, sir, that is it. It's kind of best practice under these laws to set the authorization for a limited amount of time. So in this case, it's two years. So every two years, he would need to come back and get considered by the council again.
And Gabe is here tonight. Here he is, right here in the back, if y'all want to ask any questions of him, but he's here as well. But that's basically what it is. Chairman Long?
Okay, again, this is renewal. This is not the first time for him. This is renewal of his of his previous action. And again, I would assume Ben and Mayor that this action is simply his housekeeping. I hate to say this, but we need to waive the second, third reading and go ahead and pass it tonight.
I think in order to keep kind of a continuous flow of authorization, I do think that would be best, yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. That's what I thought, too. All right, I need a motion from the committee. If no one has any questions for either the mayor or for Gabe on this, I need a motion from a committee member.
I make a motion that we send it to full council.
I've got a motion. I need a second.
I'll second.
I've got a motion, second. Tammy, please.
Long?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Red?
Coke?
Yes.
Okay. Gabe, thank you. All right, the next one that we got, Laura, this is gonna be yours. It's the continuation of the condemnation of 620 South Second Street.
Okay, again, just to recap you from the last meeting, this property is located at 620 South Second Street, which is, as everybody knows, is the old Tasty Freeze. I have spoken with the property owner. We have received some plans for the remodeling of the building. They are not fully completed plans, but I have spoken with the property owner, and it's just a lack of information from his engineer that I need to receive. So I can get that from him as well, as well as he did sign a contract with an engineering company that he did provide with me, provide to me. And I don't remember if that's in the packets or not, but it does have timelines in it on when the plans were gonna be submitted to my office. And they were submitted, they were emailed to me. I have reviewed them briefly, but they will need more engineering work on them in order for them to be complete. So that's the updated information.
Okay, if I could, if I could talk to the committee just a minute. Our ordinance allows us, in a case like this, allows us to be able to get this condemnation off of our agenda. Do away with it as long as the owner enters into a construction agreement with the city, provided by the city attorney. I spoke to the mayor, I spoke to Ben, and I spoke to Laura before the meeting. And those three are in agreement that that would work in this instance. What happens on that, it becomes then a contractual deal between the owner and the city. Ben will put certain guidelines in there based on Laura's input, based on the input from the developer. And whenever those all are hit, then this action goes away. But it will come off of our agenda, and we will not make any, we won't put any cloud on it by condemning it or anything like that. It will keep the property into status that it is now, but there will be a construction calendar that everybody has agreed to and signed on. Now, our ordinance has a time limit on the construction, how far we can go out on that. And Ben, I cannot recall that off the top of my head. I wanna think it's, I'm not even gonna say, I'm not even gonna speculate. But it's not five years. It's a shorter time than what you would think. If you remember, refresh my memory on it, but I don't remember what timeframe is on it.
I believe it is for a year, although it could be brought, after a year, it could be brought back in front of you and
To extend it, yeah. That's what I was thinking. So it's not anything that enter into a contract and it just goes away. It doesn't do that. It stays alive. The condemnation plan stays in place. If it needs to be extended, then the property owner has to ask to extend it. But this council has to approve any extensions from there. That is what I'm gonna suggest. However, I'm gonna ask the property, if he's got anything he needs to say.
I will work with the engineer about what she need information. And my engineer, he gonna call her tomorrow or work on to complete the site plan and everything that the city require. And after we get the permit, we gonna start right away to change something on the property.
I honestly think that this case falls directly into the spirit of that ordinance. There has been some substantial progress on that. There has been good faith shown on it. But curing the conditions of it was not able to be done by this time. So I think it's, I think it's an ideal time to implement that part of the ordinance. So that's what I'm gonna ask. I'm gonna ask the, I'm gonna ask for a motion from the committee, from the committee to turn this over to legal so that they can complete the contract. And then I'm gonna ask for a motion to remove it off of our agenda. So I need a motion.
I'll make that motion that we turn it over to legal and then remove it from
Okay, we're gonna do it one at a time. Okay, I've got a motion to turn it over to legal to complete the contract. I need a second.
Second.
I've got a motion, second. I really think this is the right thing to do on this. I think it just exactly falls into the spirit of that ordinance for this particular reason. Tammy?
Long?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Okay. Ben, notify the property owner whenever y'all need to sit down and do that. Try to have that done. If you can, what, 10 days or something, can you be able to do that? I think that's perfect. I think it's just absolutely perfect. I think this is just a perfect position for that. I really am.
So, does this authorize the mayor to sign that agreement, Ben?
It's in the ordinance, yes, sir.
Yes, you are authorized under CDC to so sign.
So no additional action needs to be done?
We need to, I think we're, we need to remove it from the agenda, which I think we're about to do.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, but that's, authorization is already baked into the ordinance.
And I'll make a motion that we do move it from the agenda at this point.
Okay, I've got a motion to remove it from the agenda. I need a second.
Second.
Got a motion, second, to remove it from, then, Tammy?
Long?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Okay, Laura, will you kind of coordinate that between the owner and Ben so that we can get that completed as soon as we can, please? You've got numbers, know how to get ahold of him and everything. I think this is just ideal for that. I believe this is a perfect, perfect fit for that particular part of that ordinance. Thank you. I really do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Travis, you're up next, buddy. Resolution authorizing the submittal of an application at the Arkansas Department of Parks and Heritage Tourism for assistance to develop recreational facilities.
This is just kind of some standard housekeeping of what, each year we apply for the outdoor recreation grant. It's a 50-50 matching grant. We can apply up to $250,000 to make a $500,000 project. This year, it's, or the portion of it, it's actually the same thing we applied for last year. There was a technicality on a map of regional park that they threw out, the state threw out the grant for that part of it. So we just, now that we have the development of the maps through half and what we're doing with the indoor sports complex and everything, everything's set, ready to go. So this will just be to apply, to do the same thing as we did last year, which would be a concrete skate park, which would really tie into the bike elements, the regional trail, and everything that we're talking about coming through that area.
Any questions for Mr. Travis? I need a motion.
I make a motion, we send it to full council.
I've got a motion from Maggie. I need a second.
I'll second.
Got a motion, a second. Tammy, please.
Long?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Coke?
All right, before I turn this over to Matt, we will see that last item, the 602 South Second Street, on our agenda that is coming up for the meeting. So we will need to amend the agenda to remove that off of it whenever the meeting starts, Mayor. Okay, that's it for me. Thank you.
Matt Weber, Chairman of Finance and Personnel?
Thank you, Mayor. The only item that budget has this evening is gonna be for Resolution 41, which is actually a housekeeping item because Resolution 54 of 2021 didn't actually, the transaction did not happen in that fiscal year. So this is carryover for us to try to make this happen this year. And just for clarity, that Resolution 54 of 2021 passed 7-0. But the property that we're considering again is 2231 Willie Ray Drive. If there's anything that you would like to add to this?
Yeah, it's the property in front of the street shop, so we will own that whole corner. We were supposed to close by the end of the year, but we thought there was two beneficiaries of their property that ended up being nine. So it's taken eight months, plus the two months in there, so about 10 months, or whenever we did Resolution 54, it's taken that much time to get all this done. So basically, if you want to be reminded, it's $90,000 for the 1.7 acres plus closing cost. And we did get appraisal on that, correct, Brian?
Uh, that is, no, we didn't.
Or they did?
They, no, forgive me. He, the owner had an appraisal performed prior to determine the price, and we agreed to do appraisal.
That's correct. Yeah, I knew there was appraisal in there somewhere. I just couldn't remember how we, how that was, so. But that's basically it as well, while we're needing to send it to council.
Any questions from our committee member?
I'm good.
Any questions from the rest of the council? All right, Councilman Hillenberg, I'm open for a motion to send this to council.
I make a motion that we send it to council.
Thank you, sir. So Tammy, could you take the roll count on that?
You second it?
You second?
Sorry, yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Hillenberg?
Yes.
Unanimous. Thank you very much. Send it to council. That's all I had, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Ed did announce you, that's why I didn't, just for the record. Next thing for the record, we have James Reed, Police and Fire Committee.
We don't have anything on our agenda tonight.
Thanks, sir. Community Development Committee Chairman Ed Long. Yes?
I don't know. Have you got something you want to announce about what happened this morning?
We had a groundbreaking for Fiber to Home. Cabot's infrastructure that the bond issue passed, you know, 80%. We had the big groundbreaking today, and they've been stringing fiber in the area, and they started swinging fiber today in the city limits. And so hopefully, in the next couple of months, month, we're gonna have fiber to home in that one area?
If not given me a date connection, but if they do, I would expect that to happen. They'll start the underground work at Naive Street as soon as the locating company completes work.
So they've been stringing for a while in preparation. They've been doing a lot of things in preparation for this day, so we're well off in the progress. So that was a big thing today, so.
Well, that's a pretty good economic development report.
Yeah, it's
Thank you.
You're welcome. Military Safari Committee?
Nothing's made, Mayor.
Thank you, Chairman Ron Waymack. We move now to general community input. If you'd like to address the council and the mayor, please come to the mic, state your name, and if you live in Cabot. Seeing none, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second. Got a motion from Ed, a second from James to adjourn. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Adjourned at 6:45, and now we're gonna move into the regular council meeting. We're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order, Tammy, at 6:46. And we're gonna go ahead and open it up, if you would stand with me, for prayer by James Reed and Pledge Allegiance by Ed Long.
Pray with me, please. Heavenly Father, we are thankful for your blessings on our community and the freedoms that we have. We are thankful to live in a community where we can provide for our families and raise our children in a safe environment. Lord, we ask your blessings on the city of Cabot and instill in us a servant's heart to do the business of the citizens. In these troubled times, Lord, we ask your blessings on the people of the world and their families. We lift up our military servicemen and women stationed all over the world and ask for your protection for the first responders here in our city. Lord, we further ask you to calm the mistrust and anger in our country and bring us all together as one nation under God. We thank you for your grace and mercy, and we hope to remember to always give you the glory. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
By the Lord, the Lord is the God of the United States of America, and he is the God of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as the Lord.
Thank you, everybody. You may be seated. Can I get a roll call, please, Tammy?
Long?
Here.
Red? Hillenberg?
Here.
Coke?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
Weber?
Here.
Waymack?
Here.
Okay, we have six present, one absent. Before we begin, can I get a motion to amend the agenda to remove Resolution Number?
I'll make the motion.
Hang on, Resolution Number 33 of 2022.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Got a motion from James, a second by Matt, to remove Resolution Number 33 of 2022 from the agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, roll call vote, please, Tammy?
Long?
Yes.
Hillenberg?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Waymack?
Yes.
Passes 6-0. Okay, we'll go back up to the approval minutes from our last meeting. We have, we had three meetings in July. We'll take it one by one, the July 11th minutes.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of July of 2022.
Second.
Got a motion from Brandon, a second from Ron, to approve the July 11th, 2022 minutes. Any discussions, corrections, additions? Seeing none, all in favor, roll call vote, please, Tammy?
Long?
Yes.
Hillenberg?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Waymack?
Yes.
Passes 6-0. Next minutes are July 18th, 2022.
Second.
I got a motion from James, a second from Brandon, to accept the July 18th, 2022 minutes. Any discussions, changes, corrections? Seeing none, all in favor, roll call vote, please, Tammy?
Long?
Yes.
Hillenberg?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Weber?
Abstain, I was not here for that meeting.
Waymac?
Passes 5-1, I'm sorry, 5-0-1. Next item, July 25th, 2022 minutes.
Motion to approve, second.
Got a motion from Matt, a second from James, to approve the July 25th, 2022 minutes. Any discussions, corrections, changes? Seeing none, all in favor, roll call vote, please, Tammy?
Long?
Yes.
Hillenberg?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Waymac?
Yes.
Passes 6-0. Our next item, read ordinances and resolutions by title only.
I make a motion that we read ordinances and resolutions by title only.
Second.
I got a motion from James, a second from Ron, to read ordinances and resolutions by title only. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, roll call vote, please, Tammy?
Long?
Yes.
Hillenberg?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Waymac?
Yes.
Passes 6-0. City Council, old business, I have one item, Resolution Number 25 of 2022, please, Tammy.
Resolution Number 25 of 2022, a resolution declaring this structure located at 400 East Main Street in the city of Cabot to constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structure, providing a period of time for the property owners to abate said nuisance and for other purposes.
Make a motion, we adopt Resolution Number 23 of 2022.
Second.
I got a motion from Ed, a second from Matt, to approve Resolution Number 25 of 2022. Any discussion by council? Any by the audience? Yes, sir.
I'm Keith Caldwell. I spoke with you guys a couple of months ago regarding the property. I put it up for sale with Arnett Realty, and it has been on the market almost 90 days, and at the price Mr. Arnett set, we haven't had any offers. Obviously, I would entertain an offer for below the asking price to get all this taken care of. So, at this stage, y'all have been very lenient, and I appreciate y'all for letting me put that on the market with him. At this time, I've been maintaining the lawn and just, you know, doing what I need to do over there at this, you know, to at least make the property less of a nuisance. At this stage, I would guess, hopefully, we could get with Mr. Arnett and, you know, see if we can come up with some kind of a, a price that may make someone jump soon. I don't know what your leniency is on that, but that's really where I'm at now, and maybe offering some kind of a, I know you gave me two more months, but maybe another, some kind of a deadline with a lower price and then reconvening. But we've had that at the same asking price now for two months and no offers. So, at this stage, it's just up to y'all on how lenient you're going to be in, as far as a timeline, as, you know, if I can get with Mr. Arnett and figure something out, and eventually, obviously, it will, it will come to the point of, of tearing the structure down. But, uh, thank you, I just appreciate y'all to discuss that and see what you can do.
Well, I can tell you that if the council was to vote on this, which there's always a motion and a second, so they will have to conduct a vote, is that if we vote affirmative, or the council votes affirmative, you'll have 30 days to bring the property up to the level it should be, or it should be condemned. I know that's a 30-day time period, and from there, Ben?
Sure.
Would you like to add anything that's in his purview?
So, no, that's, that's exactly correct. If, even if this, if this is approved tonight, you, you want 30 days to bring it up to code. If it sells within that 30-day period and the new owner brings to us a very detailed plan and suspects on how to bring it up to code, we will start to work with that person. But.
Sure.
The mayor is correct, even a yes vote tonight, we still, it's not going to be torn down tomorrow, I guess it's going to trigger a 30-day period. That's correct.
Sure, okay. So, I guess if that 30 days, is that where we're at now, if that's sufficient with y'all, then, then that so be it. But I will get with him and see what we can do. I mean, that's at this stage, as far as lowering the price and seeing what kind of offers we can get or interest we can get. So, I appreciate it. But if any, if 30 days is it, then I'm, of course, going to make that happen.
Thank you, Mr. Caldwell.
Thank you.
I, I will say that someone drove me by there, and it looks the best that I've seen it look in many years, so I appreciate you cleaning it up, and it does look a lot better.
Thank you, Maggie. Any other questions or discussion by council? By the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, roll call vote, please, Tammy?
Long?
Yes.
Hillenberg?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Waymac?
Yes.
Passes 6-0. We'll now move on to old, or, excuse me, new business unless anyone has any old business. Seeing none, uh, the first item is ordinance Number 24 of 2022, please, Tammy?
Number 24 of 2022, an ordinance to permit council members, officials, and/or municipal employees to do business with the city of Cabot, specifically Gabe Tischler and for other purposes. First reading.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we waive second and third reading.
Thanks, sir. I have a motion from James Reed to waive the second and third reading of ordinance Number 24 of 2022.
Second.
And I have a second from Brandon Hillenberg. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, roll call vote, please, Tammy?
Reed?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Waymac?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Hillenberg?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Passes 6-0.
I make a motion that we adopt ordinance 24.
Okay. Yes, sir, I got a motion from James Reed to adopt ordinance Number 24 of 2022. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a second for Brandon Hillenberg. Any discussion from council? Seeing none, any from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, roll call vote, please, Tammy?
Reed?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Waymac?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Hillenberg?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Passes 6-0. And then, are we gonna, do you need the emergency clause or not, Ben?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay, thank you so much. Next item, ordinance Number 25 of 2022, please, Tammy?
Number 25 of 2022, an ordinance creating, certifying, and confirming tax liens against real properties at various locations within the city of Cabot for funds expended to pay for services rendered due to code violations and for other purposes. First reading.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we waive second and third reading.
Laura, you need, you need that? Okay, we got a motion from James to waive the second and third readings. Do I have a second?
Second.
I got a second for Brandon Hillenberg. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, roll call vote, please, Tammy?
Weber?
Yes.
Waymac?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Hillenberg?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Passes 6-0.
I'll make a motion that we adopt ordinance 20, Number 25 of 2022.
Second.
I got a motion by James Reed, a second by Ron Waymac, to adopt ordinance Number 25 of 2022. Any discussion? Seeing none, any by the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, roll call vote, please, Tammy?
Weber?
Yes.
Waymac?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Hillenberg?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Passes 6-0. No need for the emergency clause, okay. Item C, we tabled, or removed, I'm sorry, we removed it. Item D, Resolution Number 40 of 2022, please, Tammy?
Resolution Number 40 of 2022, a resolution authorizing the submittal of an application to the Arkansas Department of Parks, Heritage, and Tourism for assistance to develop recreational facilities and for other purposes.
Motion, we adopt Resolution 40 of 2022.
Second.
I got a motion from Matt, a second by Maggie, to adopt Resolution Number 40 of 2022. Any discussion? Seeing none, any by the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, roll call vote, please, Tammy?
Reed?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Waymac?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Hillenberg?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Passes 6-0. Next item, Tammy, Resolution Number 41 of 2022, please.
Number 41 of 2022, a resolution to amend the general fund of the 2022 annual operating budget and for other purposes.
I make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number 41 of 2022.
Second.
I got a motion from Brandon, a second from Matt, to adopt Resolution Number 41 of 2022. Any discussion by council? Seeing none, any by the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, roll call vote, please, Tammy?
Hillenberg?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Waymac?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Passes 6-0. Any other new business, council? Seeing none, now it's time for community input. If you had anything you'd like to share with council or the mayor, please come to the podium, state your name, and if you live in Cabot. Counsel, do you have anything you'd like to close with?[1688.51]